I'm going to call this meeting to order at 7:02 PM, July 1st. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, very light agenda tonight. Doesn't look like we have any announcements. We have meeting minutes for July, not July, June 17th. Did everybody have a chance to review the meeting minutes?
I did, yeah.
Yep, any discussions?
At least seem fine to me.
Looking for a motion?
I make a motion to accept the meetings as presented to us for June 17th, 2018.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Oh, I was not here, I have to abstain, thank you. I abstain. Correspondence? No correspondence for today's meeting? No departments for today?
The chief just walked in.
Yeah, he's here for later on in the meeting, I believe. Yeah, he's here for all business. Public forum, anybody?
Can you ask a question?
Sure, you can come on up and ask a question. We might not have the answer, but you can ask a question.
That's okay.
Could make this meeting interesting somewhat.
Question nonetheless.
Just, Jerry from 47 Grove Street, just wanted to ask, has there been any further progress in the audit that we had talked about back, not more months ago? I was just curious if anything else has come forward on that or where are you on it, if we could find out?
Okay, I think Mr. Caruso has the latest and greatest news on audit.
Sure, so we're just trying to get the firm in that I'd like to have involved to come in and scope things out, and so we're back and forth communicating on arranging that. They're in a very busy period right now for them.
Yeah, imagine.
So we'll get them in and then we'll find out whether they need, what period of time they're going to be needing to audit. Hopefully not as long a period of time as some might have thought in the past. We'll know more, I don't have anything specific from them yet in terms of coming.
Nothing yet, no. Okay. And as far as the offer from that Mr. Fat Man had, I was just curious as to whether that still stands? Doesn't stand, is it watered down, has it been approved? Where are, were that all processed?
I think you had a conversation with the finance committee.
Yes, I spoke with him, he said, he put an earmark in at the State Senate for $30,000 and it was approved. And that we would expect to see it by the end of this fiscal year, which just started today.
So that means it's official, then if it's earmarked and been approved, or it's still waiting pending budget?
Well, I think, you know, in that situation, from my experience, you know, until you see the money, it's not as official as you'd like it.
Easy earmark.
Usually it's going to happen.
Earmarks are more correct.
Amount's 30,000.
Yeah, it's 30 grand?
Yeah.
And we have 25 in our budget as well.
So that should give us sufficient dollars to be able to even reverse ourselves and do something, or indeed be able to take it even deeper if we had to do a deep dive if we want to.
It should.
That's correct.
It should.
So we should have a good handle on it, be figured by the end of the year anyways?
Right.
That's the point.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Anybody else? Going to new business, year-end reserve fund and other transfers and adjustments, if any? Do we have any for tonight?
So we have nothing for tonight.
Okay.
And we spoke to the, you know, our town accountant, and they're working diligently. A lot of bills came in the last few days and week, and so they're trying to close out the year. And it looks like we might have to schedule a brief meeting to go through any transfers that may have been, may get identified
Okay.
once they're complete. And we'll know more in the next two days, I hope.
Okay, so maybe at the end of this meeting, we can choose a date for next week?
Yes, ideally next week, because the finance committee is scheduled to meet. I think they're scheduled to meet on the 10th.
Okay.
And so, as a last resort, we thought possibly meeting even a half hour before their meeting.
Okay.
If it gets pushed out to that.
Right, yeah.
And to the extent folks are available.
Right, okay, we'll look at that at the end. Notification of donated sports equipment, storage shed at Millville Elementary School?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know, I'd heard from the Assistant Superintendent Matt, and he mentioned that they were, that one of the parents had made arrangements for donations of toys, recess outdoor game toys
Okay.
as well as a four-by-eight storage shed, and that they were putting that up at the Millville Elementary School right by the field. And I just wanted to let you know that, it's not something that anybody has to take action on other than perhaps the school committee accepting the gift. And it was all arranged by Mrs. Helena Lietke, and I apologize if I don't speak her name properly. But I did get up there today, actually, me with the principal, Christina Schaefer, and she showed me all the toys and, boy, there's, you know, games. There'll be outdoor pong, for example, large pong, a large ball, kids can...
Much needed up there.
So, a whole bunch of different stuff that look like a lot of fun.
Yeah, the only thing is, I think that needs to go through the Parks and Recs, because anything that's, because we own the land, so like when they put up a memorial or they put up a structure or they put up anything, the Board of Assessors have to, or the Parks Committee usually takes it, talk about location, because if they have future plans about where their development is, they want to make sure that the shed fits appropriately in keeping with the area they would like too. So working together. So before the shed's placed, they should be...
In contact, Parks and Rec.
Technically, anything that goes, a permanent structure on the property goes through the town.
Okay.
That's been the process.
Do we know if they've already done that, or we just...
The shed hasn't been constructed yet, they have the materials for it, or they're...
Oh, it's brand.
They don't have the materials, they're, Lowe's will be doing it, so...
Oh, nice.
They have all the toys, all the games and so forth.
Yeah, typically, they go through Parks and Recs, and then Parks and Rec will come to us and then we just give like a final approval of that.
Very good.
Okay, I'll let them know.
Thank you. Okay, Town Hall, the summer trial of new hours.
Yes, I put a memo into your packets there that, talking to the folks here and being here on Wednesday evenings, you know, typically there's nobody showing up after 7 o'clock. In the last couple of weeks, there's been hardly anybody, occasional someone coming and paying a tax bill. So the thought was that instead of being open on Wednesday evenings for two hours, that we would be open longer during two days, so two hours longer, two of the days during the week, which would be Tuesday and Wednesday. So the Town Hall hours would be nine to three on both those days, instead of nine to one. And then to the extent that somebody does need to meet with a department head or do some business with the town, they can, they can make those arrangements directly with the department people, mutually agreeable times. The only thing is that what I want to do is have the policy that nobody comes in after hours unless there are other people here.
Right.
Particularly if there's, you know, so if somebody came in to meet with Diane this evening, for example, that would be okay while we're here, but otherwise, if the building's closed, the policy is that no one would come in.
So which departments are typically here on Wednesday nights?
So, tax collectors here, the building department is here, Diane is generally here. So most of the Town Hall operate, board health is here. So everybody that's here during the day is typically here.
And how would we notify the residents of the change?
So that would go on the website and just, you know, I don't know, we'd do much more than that.
Cable, then we'll do up a notification for cable.
I mean, if there's nobody really coming in, and we can make it flexible, where maybe Wednesday night's not good for everybody anyway, and they can come in on a Tuesday or Thursday or Monday?
Right.
As long as it's communicated, I don't think it's an issue.
So we're reducing the hours on Wednesday evenings, the two hours, but we're adding four during the day.
Right, so essentially we're having more Town Hall.
More hours available, that's correct.
Right.
And we'll try that during the summer and see how that goes.
Okay, do we need to take a vote on that?
Probably.
I think, yeah, we should probably. Do we have any other questions, comments?
Will this affect the budget for employees?
No, no, so in fact, the employees, to the extent that they're missing two hours, they will make it up by coming in early or staying later. There'll be no, otherwise no impact on the budget, maybe saving a little utility charge on the Wednesday evenings.
Will the tax assessor and collector, will they provide evening hours right around tax season, tax payment time?
I think we'll have to work that out with them. I think that, that's something we, if you think that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, you might want to touch base with them, but I know if I've been in here on a Wednesday evening, you know, right around tax time, it does get a little busy. And I know that we often will approve Masha's assistant, extra hours, because she does do so many hours on a Wednesday. So I think we just want to keep those four times a year on our radar.
Flexible, right, okay, that's a very good point, yeah.
Yeah, and when people are calling for an appointment, if there's multiple appointments.
Yep.
Yeah, we may find that the world really wants their Wednesday nights back quickly.
It's just a trial.
Yeah, and I believe that, I believe that, you know, when things are, when change comes in, it's sometimes, some people might not like it, but once you adjust to it, it accommodates.
Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to adjust the hours of the Town Hall to be Monday, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Tuesday and Wednesday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And Thursdays, 9:00 to 1:00 PM, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And evening appointments as mutually agreed upon.
Would anybody like to second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Police Department appointments?
So if you, so if you look at the sheet that is in your packet, and the chief is welcome to come talk about his folks here because they're his team. He's got you with a bunch of officers for one-year reappointment, for their term would expire 6/30/2020, and then he has two other appointees, chief, you can see the list right there.
Maybe you didn't bring your glasses, chief.
18 inches away, I'm okay.
This is big print on here, too.
That's right. It's large font, this is.
Yeah, yeah. So it looks like there's mostly reappointments, you have two new officers. Are those additional replacements?
The full-time position's replacement.
Okay.
And the part-time officer's a new position.
Okay.
And one of those starts effective August 1st, the others are effective, correct?
And the regular part-timers, those are just simply yearly appointments?
Right.
Years in the past, we used to have one-year appointment, two-year appointment, three-year appointments, so we changed it to all one-year appointments.
Right.
So keep it simple.
Absolutely. Any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Pillar?
Yes.
Does he work within the school system?
No, he works in Mofit.
Now, I've seen the name before.
He's actually, we're not actually adding a new part-timer, he's taken LaCava's place, who was a part-timer going to the full-time position.
So it's not a new position, it's just...
It's replacing, right.
Filling in.
Correct.
So you didn't create a new part-time position?
Well, we, I'd like to have as many as we can.
No, I know.
Sometimes too many is not, not good. So we've got just the right amount of people.
Okay.
So you're adding one full-time position?
Not adding, we're just replacing officer Landry.
Okay.
That position theoretically should have been filled three months ago.
Right.
But because of the budget cut, I would have been short at the end of the year. So I held off filling the position till now.
So this is in your...
It's in my 2020 budget, correct.
So I'll make a motion to approve appointment of the officers as followed, with an expiration of June 30th, 2020. Officer Edward St. Pierre, Officer Thomas Reynolds, Officer James Kuzak, Officer Philip Franzen, Officer Rodola Valley, Officer Harry...
Servantes.
Servantes, Officer Nick Green, and Officer Christopher Pillar.
You've skipped one.
He's August 1st, right?
Yes, he is August 1st.
He will be August 1st, correct.
August 1st through when?
Through June 30th of next year.
Yeah, they're both altered.
He's effective July 1st.
So the top ones, these are all part-times?
Part-times.
Okay, I get you now.
Anybody like to second the motion?
Oh, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to appoint Officer Steve LaCava, beginning August 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2020.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thanks.
Make it so easy, chief.
All right, and then we also have more reappointments.
That's correct, and I'm going to add to your list, actually, it would be a three-year appointment of Eric Olson to the Conservation Commission. So his term would end 6/30/22, Eric Olson, we just got his paperwork in this afternoon.
Conservation Committee?
And on that list, for Chief Ronald Landry, there is no Commemorative Committee? That was, is voted to be dissolved by the committee. I think it was a crossover when those letters went out to our meeting.
Right, right, that's right.
All right, so I make a motion, unless someone wants me to hold any of these names before them?
I'm fine with all of them.
So I make a motion to reappoint for one year, starting July 1st through June 30th, 2020, Calvin Sullivan, Animal Control Officer, Colleen Curis, Cable Access Committee, Chief Ronald Landry, Emergency Management, Parks and Recreation, John Grenga, Electrical Inspector, Patricia Benoit Rudden, Green Community Committee, and Copeland and Page Town Council.
I have a second.
So, with the Town Council, and I haven't really been involved in any of the interaction with them, they are an adequate council for what our needs are and stuff like that. I mean, I haven't had any...
I mean, I haven't had any issues.
Okay, I was just questioning, I just...
Right, no, that's fine, and I don't know what the, maybe you can explain to us, Peter, is there a process of, I mean, obviously, is this an appointment or any type of open bid law or anything like that for Town Council?
Not that I'm aware for these, this reappointment, and they do service, I found them very responsive, with good expertise, they have resources for various different aspects, and I think they've been coming in certainly lower than budget so far, so they're reasonably economical as well.
One of the reasons we went Copeland and Page when we priced them out a few years ago, actually, we went with a different company, a different business, because there was Barbara St. Lauren, who is the, really a professional as far as land issues and planning board issues, and we really needed that expertise on what the town was going. So we went with her firm, and shortly after that, she switched over to Copeland and Page, and we actually followed her because of that. I know the planning board's been very pleased. I know when I worked in the administrative office, when we didn't have an administrative, Brian Mazur is amazing in his response time, on the weekends, on Sundays, whenever. And Mr. Riley is appropriate in his, in his turnaround, and especially when we didn't have anyone and he had to talk me off a ledge a few times. You know, he just, it would be like, the email would say, "Just call me," like, no more emails, just call me.
I just haven't had any exposure to him, so I was just curious as to...
Yeah, they're a pretty big firm, and then they have specialized attorneys for each department, so we don't, not every town department is using the same attorney, they're using whoever's specialized in that area.
Okay. So there's no written contract for this at all, for the Copeland and Page, or...
Good question, I think there's an initial one.
There's initial, and then you can renew for so many years after.
So if you want to hold on that one, that's fine, I'll double-check that.
Yeah.
Because that's a good question.
I know they just sent us their increases in the spring.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
But again, they've been tracking pretty below their budgeted amount.
Yes.
And when I saw the bills for county meeting, for example, they were a lot less than what I remember seeing for a different town when I was active and that sort of thing. So I'll just say that. And again, they've been very responsive, because I've had a number of questions that I've been asking of late, and I've been getting good answers.
Yeah, I actually thought it was, I didn't realize it was an appointed position per se. I thought it was a contracted.
That's correct, yeah.
So it is.
Contract, but you have to reappoint them because the original contract, so you may want to check on the contract. The contract will go for three years, and then by state law, you can renew so many times before you have to, like, rescind it all.
Yeah, I haven't seen their contract. So do we want to hold on that one?
I'll amend my motion to remove Copeland and Page appointment.
Okay. All right, anybody want a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that it for appointments?
No. I make a motion to appoint Eric Olson to the...
Conservation.
Is it Conservation?
Yep.
Conservation Committee, beginning July 1st through June 30th, 2022.
Looking for a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
The original was? Oh, this is... There's a list of what we...
Yeah, so that was just a memo about what to expect, getting the list today and where we're still at with things. And now you've just eliminated one vacancy, which is Conservation Committee.
Okay.
Yeah, and I believe the planning board, I think they found someone?
They have, but that has to be scheduled...
Between the two, yes.
And they can't probably get together with you until the August meeting.
Right, and the individual had asked, he needed to attend tonight, and I had told him he wasn't on the agenda, so. Perfect, well, that's good, it's nice to know that that committee, and we still, our other big one is our Board of Assessors. We still need one member.
For the one-year replacement.
Yes.
Right. So I'm just going to read through, there's only a few on this list, the current vacancies. Obviously, Board of Assessors, we're looking for another person, Cable Access Committee, Conservation Commission.
Just now one.
Yep, just one on that one.
Yep.
Cultural Council, one. Planning Board, looks like there's two, is there two on there or one?
It's the one member that has to be appointed jointly with the Planning Board.
Okay.
And then there's an associate member, and I don't know that anybody stepped up for that yet that is appointed by the selectmen.
Veterans Services, another important one, Zoning Board of Appeals, and also a potential future Mema Director to serve as an Assistant to Chief Landry. So those, are these, these are posted online as well?
Yes.
Okay, so. Nice to get some of these, more of these positions filled, but they're filling, which is nice.
That's pretty good.
Mm-hmm, yeah, definitely.
Good participation.
Thank you. And I think that's it for appointments, reappointments, and open positions, correct? All right, Selectmen's Forum, does anybody have anything for tonight?
I have two things.
Okay.
The first is that last meeting, we had talked about the Central Street, four-way stop, I believe, or the stop signs on Central Street. I was wondering if there had been any progress on that, or what was happening with that in any way?
I believe you had a conversation with Brian?
Well, there's, there was an email received regarding a three-way stop at Quaker Street and Central Street.
Is that the one you're speaking of, or...
I believe so, yeah, and it was also on the list.
Yeah, maybe, because there already is a four-way stop at Prospect Street and Central Street. Providence, I'm sorry, Providence and Central. And everybody's happy with that, apparently, in that way. And so somebody requested looking into and possibly offering to pay for a three-way stop set up at Quaker and Central. And just in talking to the chief and Brian at this stage, you know, let's wait and see how the street completion has been done before doing anything, and how all the sightlines are and so forth. That is not an intersection that's, according to the chief, has shown a lot of incidents of accidents and lack of safety, if you will, so it's not one that seems to be anybody that are subject matter experts are too concerned about right now. But I understand a resident has some issues negotiating that intersection.
And the second one was a follow-up on if you had had a conversation with the Town Council on previous minutes with the Finance Director where we had used that, what was...
I did, and they said there was nothing to be concerned about regarding that, it was more just a semantic reference, and we never had, do not have a Finance Director, even though it was in the minutes. And so, yes, I did talk to Council on that.
Okay, good, thank you.
One question related to the roads, obviously, the bike path is a very important juncture, and I was happy to see some radar being done there yesterday. Just wondering, maybe, chief, you can answer me, is it possible to maybe get like the barrel back out there for people that aren't, I slow down there every time because I know there's a bike path there? Do you think the barrel could help, or, you know, with the orange barrel we had out there before? Is that possible, or is it not something, have you considered it, I'm sure?
I did spend money last year to buy one of those signs you place in the middle.
Yep.
It was run over so many times, it's broke.
Okay.
So if we place something out there, it's going to get hit.
Yeah.
The good news is with this new grant, with Central Street being redesigned, there's going to be new warning signs that light.
Right.
So I think the warning aspect of it's going to greatly improve before you even get to the crosswalk.
Okay, good, good.
So I think it's going to be fine. We can place it back out there, but we have to take it in every night because we left it overnight and we found it destroyed.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, just something to be concerned about, just because I know the people in the area know to slow down there, but people that are going to the zoo, for instance, we get a lot of traffic that goes through, they don't necessarily slow down.
The plan with Brian, once the road is finished, we're going to try to make a safety zone of reducing the speed to 25 miles per hour, just for that area. So that's going to greatly improve the safety as well, because the walkway's getting more use, more and more. It's becoming more popular, more people are coming, especially it goes through one socket now.
Right.
And once it goes into Oxbridge, it's going to be used more often. So I think we have to do something with that. So I think the extra signage is going to help.
Okay.
But we can...
We did receive an email from a gentleman who was concerned about it, and we brought it up at our last meeting.
The barrel, because that road is still narrow.
Right, right.
The width of that barrel, it would be struck within hours. So I do have the one that stands up, but it's in need of repair. It was $300 and it lasted about three months.
Yeah. It's like a good return, though.
We can try.
Keep doing the radar out there, we'll pay for the barrel.
We can try to get it back out there.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with, I know the pedestrians are supposed to stop, but you still get a little kid once in a while that doesn't know.
No, I agree, and I think the speed of that road, once it's repaved, you're going to have...
The grade is changing a bit, right?
It is, the grade is going to change. So I think the speed's going to increase with any new road, speed increases. So we'll do our best to control that, we'll try to place something there again.
Right, okay, thank you.
See if it works, okay.
Thank you. Anything else, Selectmen's Forum?
I just want to say that I have noticed, I know the senior center reopened after the winter, when we knew we could stay within the budget that was presented at Town Meeting. But I've noticed that they've really, they're in full swing with their programming.
Yeah.
Really getting their information out there, very proud of, you know, the work that they're all doing down there. And it's, it's nice to see that group coming together and, and putting, and some of their programs too is for the whole community.
Right, yeah, I noticed a few of those.
Just a positive, just a, a nice Millville pride moment.
Good, very good. Anyone else?
I don't have anything.
No?
No.
Okay. All right, Peter, back to you, Town Administrators report.
Okay, well, we've covered a couple of things on my list, which is good, the Quaker and Central Ave intersection was one, as well as the Finance Director. On Central Street, folks might notice that the construction has slowed a little bit. And I'm meeting with Brian tomorrow, but he, you know, I checked with him today, and basically, they're waiting on underground structures before they get digging to have to put those in. So things are a little slow right now in terms of what they've been doing. So there's that thing. Separately, I did get an inquiry for another cannabis retail operation. Somebody inquiring whether or not we would accept an application for that. So I'm just double-checking with Council on that. I see no exclusivity in the existing post agreement we have with Garden Wonders. Wonders, and so I'm just letting you know about this, and research it, and I did communicate with the person inquiring, and said, "I can't speak to the, the business or retail opportunity, given that there's, you know, going to be competition," and that person wasn't concerned about that, so, just putting that out there. There will be at the end, for you to sign, there was a request at the last meeting, for a form for year-end transfers, and you, the Board had voted at the last meeting on an email, which Town Accountant said was sufficient, but what I thought I would do is just have an evidence of signature on one page that references what was voted on, so there'll be something for folks to sign at the end with the minutes, okay? The Bay State Municipal Accounting, our Town Accounting Service Provider, we've entered into a ninety-day extension, so, of the existing contract, under the existing contract, they do get to renew, and we haven't done that yet, they renew for another year, and they can raise their rates X percent, not a very large percentage, but right now, we're just operating with an extension of the current contract, and we'll continue to work through that. There, I didn't have an announcement, but I did get notice that, looks like we're arranging for State Rep Soder to come in on August eighth, that's the tentative date right now.
Okay.
And I plan to be there, and we'll have more notice of that, because I think there's an opportunity for folks to meet, you know, a government official at the state level, who's interested in meeting the Millville resident, so...
Right, he did come last, the month before last of last month, but I don't think we made enough publication about it, so he didn't have any visitors, so he got stuck talking to me the whole time, so...
He said he enjoyed that.
I'm sure he did.
So, that's really all I had at this stage.
Okay, good, very good, thank you. Do you have any items not reasonably anticipated in the last forty-eight hours that you needed to?
No.
So, it looks like we have signatures for meeting minutes, the email, and we don't have any reserve fund transfers for tonight.
That's correct, and so, all it is, is the approval of the one from the last meeting.
And our next, yeah, our next regular meeting's August fifth, but we want to discuss doing a meeting next week for some reserve fund transfers that may come in, and you, do you know if the Finance Committee set their meeting?
I don't know, I can't remember, it was the Tuesday or the Wednesday of next week, was what they were planning on, I don't know that they've actually done a notice of that, but I'll check in with Aubrey tomorrow, I'll have more updates over the next two days, between Finance Committee, as well as Town Accountant.
Okay, is everybody, is there any days that are better for you, or not better for you? It's going to be a quick meeting, just a, yeah.
I mean, as long as it's not, like, too early, I have a hard time getting out of work in.
Seven o'clock, good.
Seven o'clock is generally a good, it's a good time.
I'm good next week. Any days that are better or worse for you?
Monday is usually better.
I think that might be too early, though, in the week.
So, it's, the evenings are pretty crowded, but it depends.
Okay, so we'll pick, after we find out what the Finance Committee is, I could send out a note for us to choose a meeting date, so I'm not going to sign either one of these, because I wasn't here for either one of them.
Thank you.
All right, our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, August fifth, two thousand nineteen, Jen, we're going to go into executive session.
I move that the Board of Assessors enter into executive session in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-one-A, Number Three, to discuss strategy relative to pending litigation, where discussion of these matters in open session would have a detrimental effect on the litigation process of the town, and to reconvene in open session only to adjourn the meeting.
So, do roll call now, right? I always get these backwards, roll to enter, roll?
I need a second on it.
And we do second first.
I made the motion, we need a second.
And get a second?
Second.
Second, now we do roll, I'll get this sooner or later.
Aye.
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 Okay.
And then when we come out, we roll out, and then we just do a regular motion to adjourn.
All right.